I am going to call our work session to order. I don't have a gavel. A couple of things up front. I am open to feedback on location of future work sessions. We did MODCOB. I thought it would be a little more conducive to a discussion. But it does present some media challenges. So, thanks to you guys for getting that set up. When you speak, please do grab the microphone and actually like talk directly into it. We are not able to do Facebook Live. There's no Wi-Fi at MODCOB today, so they're going to record it best they can. And if the audio is good, they will post it later. But do please try to grab the microphone and talk into it. Is there anything else I need to cover with that? That's good? Okay, thank you. We are going to do citizen comments at the beginning for all discussion items. And that will be right here. So, my first citizen card is from Sharon Redman. And Sharon, if you would tell us your name and your address.
Hello.
Let's make sure you're on. Just one sec.
Hello. Hi, I'm Sharon Redman. My address is 3704 Roundsville Drive, Longview. And it's in the Spring Hill area of Longview. And I'm speaking on behalf of the need for the repairs at the Longview Swim Center and how important aquatics was to my children and also to my grandchildren. When we moved back to Longview in 1999, both of my children, who are both grown adults now, but they loved to go swimming at the Longview Swim Center. I gave them swimming lessons. They are both excellent swimmers. And then when my grandchildren were born this summer, or not this summer, but during the summers, I always took them to the Longview Swim Center to swim. And I also gave them swim lessons there. And my seven-year-old granddaughter already had made it to level five by the time she was seven. She's nine now. She wasn't able to take swim lessons there last year because of a lack of lifeguards that were willing to teach swim lessons. And of course, obviously, this year it's closed. Last year, the deep end was closed, and that made them sad because she was practicing swimming laps. She wants to be on a high school swim team. And I just think it was not only important to them, but swimming and having a place to go that's local is important for all children. Not everyone, including myself, can afford to have a pool in their yard or even have friends that have pools. So, I think that having a public pool in local areas such as the Pine Tree area and of course, on the south side where I grew up, Ingram Pool, I think it's still open this year, but I know there's low staff too. But the Swim Center is closer to me and it's bigger. And my grandchildren and children both loved it. And I hate to see it just go by the wayside. I think it's important for all average citizens, for their children, to have a place that's inexpensive to go during the heat of the summer and to have a place to swim and exercise and have fun with their friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next, I have Ray Bostick.
On the off chance there might be somebody here that doesn't know me, my name is Ray Bostick. I live at 1302 Longdale Avenue over in Pine Tree. And I read the paper this morning, saw an interesting article about the proposed three-and-a-half billion dollar pool. I'd like to see the engineering plans and what the projected operational cost and the staffing plan for that pool is before it's built. I would like to see our council take a metered approach to this. You know, in 1974, the Longview Swim Center opened when Pine Tree was an open campus. You could get on there just about any time of day, regardless of whether school was in session or not. I was first batch of kids that jumped in that pool. That was a long time ago. Our community's changed. Aquatic participation has changed. I think that the best thing that we can do if we're talking about spending money at the level of three-and-a-half million plus is to take a breath and step back and get your aquatic master plan in place and work off that plan. I don't know how many times I've seen hasty decisions end up not being what we thought they were going to be when we took them on. You know, I was born here in 1966. I grew up here, graduated from Pine Tree School. I have a little bit of experience in the community here. You know, before Longview Swim Center was built, mother would take us over to Ingram Pool. Well, we lived in West Longview, so that saved us a pretty long drive. And I'm going to tell you something, there's not a more wholesome recreational activity than aquatics, whether it's playing on a splash pad or swimming in a pool. It touches all of the basic childhood development aspects that a playground does. Upper body development, lower body development, balance and equilibrium, social development, you know, negotiating time on the slide, your place in line, all of that kind of stuff. You can do it at a swimming pool or a splash pad. But when you talk about spending that kind of money, it doesn't need to be rushed. It needs to be studied and planned. We need to figure out if we can even staff. If you build two or three new swimming pools, you're going to have two or three new swimming pools. But you ain't going to open them unless you have staff. The state health code says that if you're one staff short of the required number of people for maximum swimmer capacity in that pool, you don't open. And I've seen years where we could open one pool a day and move the staff around because we just didn't have the staff. And that's something that needs to be thought out. We need to find out where we need these facilities. There's parts of Longview that are grossly underserved with parks and recreation facilities. So, I don't think if you had the money in your hand right now and you went out and hired a design firm, I don't think you'd be swimming until the summer of 2026 because it will take time to do. I don't think you're going to lose any time if you take 90 days, get your master aquatics plan in shape, and plot out how you're going to spend that money. And if it's going to be a significant amount of money, in my opinion, I think the public should have the opportunity to express their desire through a vote. That's just my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ray. Next, I have Jim Serrato.
Howdy. Mayor and city council, it's Jim Serrato. And I'm at 1300 Leslie. I am well-served by Mr. Pertle. And I just wanted to, I didn't know Ray was coming, didn't know what Ray was going to say, but I guess I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what he said. I am not against us having pools. In fact, I think we probably need pools. My problem is, I'm an engineer. We are data-driven. Everything we do has got to be based on what's the goal? How do we know when we declare victory? And obviously, I served on the school board for 12 years, so I know y'all know more than I do about what y'all are talking about. However, I have yet to hear anybody tell me what's our goal? Are we trying to get something that teenagers can have something to do in Longview? Or are we trying to do something where we have five-year-olds and under learn how to swim? Or are we just trying to get a place where maybe some of our socioeconomic people that are less fortunate don't have pools at home, they have a place to cool down? They may just... So, to me, I don't know whether we're looking at one pool, two pools, three pools, seven splash pads, 18. To me, I don't know what would solve the problem, what would make this right. And so, the thought, if I was sitting in your shoes, would I vote to spend money? And the answer is no, I don't. I don't want to vote for a solution in search of a problem. I'd rather have somebody sit down and tell me, okay, here are the six goals that we need to achieve. Here are the specific locations. One of the concerns I have is, I think Thursday you're going to talk about Stamford Park. Well, does anybody know where Longview's going to put their aquatic center? I mean, what if they decide they want to put it at where? Would it make any sense to have something at Stamford if they put it where? I think the first thing I would do is ask y'all to wait and see what Longview's going to do. They've already approved their pool. It's going to go somewhere. Why would I put something at Stamford and they can say, hey, I'm not going to go over there. I'm going to go to Forest Park or someplace else. And then the other thing I would do is, once I come up with this plan, I don't know that I'd take money out of fund balance. If you have a good program, and I think Pine Tree showed, if you have a good plan and you lay it out to the voters, what is it, one cent is $10 million or something like that? You can fund the infrastructure. And then I know part of the other concern is, well, what about ongoing costs? I know if I was doing it, I'd have splash pads and I'd have cone of ice and five food trucks out there, and I'd take 20% of the gross to help offset things. So, I think there's some things that could be done. I haven't heard anybody talking about that. Now, maybe y'all are talking about behind the scenes. Maybe that's the purpose of tonight, for y'all to talk about what different options we have. But I try to put myself in y'all's shoes. Something does need to be done. I agree. We obviously have dropped the ball on the Pine Tree pool. That's water under the bridge. I agree, that should have been something that we handled, but what's done is done. We can't un-ring that bell. So, what I would focus on if I was in y'all's position is what can we do going forward? And the first thing I would want is, I'd want somebody to tell me what's the goal? When do we achieve success? And it may be one pool, maybe five pools, and it may be a bond. It may be money from fund balance. It may be a combination. I just don't think that I've seen anything, and maybe that's the whole purpose of the aquatic plan, is to come back. And I'm not a big fan of consultants. I can tell you, I am the worst person in the world with consultants. But sometimes you have to have consultants. And I also agree with Ray, we need to do something quick. We don't need to drag this out for two years. I think if we could do something where you get, and if you do it as consultant, and they go out and they get input from the community, and we say, here's what we're going to do, and then y'all come up and say, here's how we're going to fund it. And if you sell that to the public, if the public decides we're going to vote a penny or two, then we can go forward and make sense where we can serve the entire community. Because I really don't even know which, what your target audience is. And if y'all do, it'd be good for y'all to publish that because that would be one of the things I'd like to know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. That is the end of the speaker cards I have. Would anyone else like to complete a speaker card and come up and make comment? Okay, I will move on to our discussion items then. First is discussion item A, presentation regarding fund balance and the city council policy regarding same from Angela Cohen, our Director of Finance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I've been asked to give a brief overview of the city's general fund balance, what it is, what it's used for.
Can you bring the mic closer?
I speak low anyway, sorry about that. What it is, what it's used for, and its current status. Although the city has numerous funds, this presentation will only be on the general fund. And as a brief explainer, fund balance is a common accounting term, but it simply means cash, the available cash reserves, what's left in a fund after all your revenue and expenses have been accounted for. So, on the screen you'll see for the FY 2324 general fund balance, we are estimating to have $29.6 million. And when we talk about the fund balance during the budget process, we always split it up into two components. We'll talk about the 10% required reserves, and we'll also talk about the excess above that 10% required reserves. And the reason we do that is because council does have an adopted fund balance policy that requires that the city maintain a balance of at least 10% of the estimated annual operating expenses. So, up on the screen you'll see that we are estimating the 10% required reserve to be $9.5 million and above that, $20 million. So, what can we do with that 10% required reserves? The language on the screen is from the official council adopted policy from our financial management performance criteria. And what it essentially means is that we set aside a pot of money in case we have an emergency of some kind, if we have an economic downturn, we have a financial crisis or a natural disaster. We have that money set aside so that we can continue with our normal operations and spend that money on that event. So, what can we do with the excess above 10%? While our policy doesn't address, the official council policy does not address the excess above the 10%, but we can look at best practices and we can look at past council decisions to try to, as a guideline for those uses. And one of the best practices and one of the most common past type of expenditure we have done is a one-time expenditure that are not revenue-dependent for sustainability. So, that means that that expense already has maintenance and operating cost in the current budget. It will not put pressures on future budgets. A good example of that, in the past, we've done fire trucks. We've done quite a few fire trucks. We've done an ERP software. And most recently, we've done the pickleball court parking lot. Another practical use that we have done in the past is unanticipated expenditures. Those are one-time in nature also, but they fall outside of the budget process. So, they normally come to you like a major repair for a facility, and a budget amendment will be presented to council and you will adopt that amendment. So, this is a chart that illustrates the past 10 years of our general fund balance reserve. And as you can see in red, we have always maintained our 10% minimum, and above that is the excess. And in green is the amount that we have actually spent each year out of our cash reserves. And over, from 2014 to about 2020, it varied on the amount that we had actually spent. And then in 2021, it dropped off. And then in '22, '23, '24, you see, we spent very little. And actually, in '23 and '24, that budget was adopted without the use of fund balance. And we actually came back to council and had budget amendments during those two years. And the last thing I would like to note is that there are significant external factors that may prompt additional city council considerations prior to the use of an excess fund balance. These include continued inflationary pressures on our current budget as well as increasing legislative constraints which hamper our ability to cover those rising costs. So, in short, as finances get tighter, our available cash reserves become more valuable in assisting with those very large one-time expenditures. And with that, I can answer any questions.
I did want to ask, and it might be better for Rollin to address, but as we're kind of embarking on the budget season, I thought it was appropriate to maybe give a short overview about how that budget looks, constraints, and then also just for those, you know, that this is their first budget season. Typically, when the budget gets presented, if there is a need that we're going to use fund balance for, often that is part of that presentation that we consider. So, if you're going to be asking for anything out of that, would you address that too? I forgot we were sharing a microphone.
Certainly. One of the things that I want to talk about with budget seasons, in both the past budgets that I brought before city council, I've made it clear in my presentations that it was not my job to spend fund balance. It was my job to make sure that we were sustainable for the future. I will tell you this, each year that we have talked about things that we want to see accomplished in the budget, we've had a really good couple of years. We've been able to accomplish many of the things and components that city council has requested. Here's a preview, that's not going to be the case this year. The problem is, we have done a great job, our directors have done a great job in budgeting things that they need and things that they can accomplish in the timeframe of a year. In the past, you remember times where we've used savings from year ends to finance some things? We may be able to do a little bit of that, but the reality is, they're budgeting properly for needs, not wants. And they're also executing on that, which leaves little flexibility in the coming year. This budget was, the initial general fund requests were somewhere in the neighborhood of $102.5 million, and the available revenues is $95 million. So, I will tell you, this has been an excruciating process. Most of this is compounded by two things, which I sound like a broken record on because many of you have heard me talk in public about the continued constraints that the state legislature places on municipalities. In my budget kickoff this year, one of the slides that we showed our administrative team was that we're the target next year, and that's the reality. So, what that does is, that means we have to make sure that whatever we do in our budgeting and in our request to council for approval is sustainable and that we can have the revenues to cover it. Over the last two years, many of you, we all live in this community, we've seen what's happened to the appraised values, but the legislature put some caps, not only on home value increases, but also on business value increases, as well as limited our increased revenue to 3.5% on property tax, which is a third of our revenue. And so, what I'm trying to say by that is, when those constraints over the last three years, we've had more than 3.5% inflation. And everybody has felt it, everybody, it's been a part of the discussion we've had on salaries, it's been part of the discussion on operations. The value of a dollar three years ago is not what it is today. And it has exceeded 3.5%. So, that leaves the other two revenue streams, which are permits, fees, and fines, which those are user fees, right? And those, we will have to do some adjustments to maintain what we're doing in the future. But then there's sales tax. Unfortunately, as is common during election years and tensions politically, there's a pullback. And due to the inflationary concerns and increased costs that people have, there's less disposable income that is being taken in by the city for use in offsetting their budgets. So, with that standpoint, there are some one-time purchases that I have made clear in each of my budget presentations to council, that I will identify those needs, but they are not going to be part of my proposal if I can at all avoid that. So, there are some things, like fire engines. We still have a difficulty in lead time for delivery of a fire station. Some of those things, fire engine, excuse me, some of those things, we're not able to fund on a sustainable basis. And that's where, as the legislature continues to focus on our revenues in the future, now and in the future, they take the sales tax from us and use that to buy down property taxes for schools and have started the compression rate that many of you have experienced in the schools. The story of this session will be about the cities as well. And so, I think that's important. Those reserves become very, very important into how we use those in the future. And to that, that's council's discretion on how to use those reserves.
I do want to ask you, Rollin, specifically, just because I know these two things always come up for me during budget time, and I've asked about these before. Do you anticipate in this budget being able to give a cost of living increase to city employees?
No, ma'am. I do not.
And the typical road maintenance that we provide, are we anticipating cuts in those expenses for the upcoming budget year?
We are currently anticipating some reduction in that service level.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Angela or Rollin? I don't want to hog that. Mr. Conley?
Yes, is this okay?
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, so I, as someone who has spent almost 30 years in education and dealing with, specifically now as an educational label budget, I understand that our legislators and how we are in a situation with inflation and constraints. But I just have one quick question. And with that 20, it's what, 20.9 million?
Yes, 29.6.
29.6. So, can you give us, I'm just curious, like what's our daily operating, how many days in that fund balance, like you said, is, with the school, we have a fund balance that we maintain for emergency purposes? How many days could we operate with the 29.6?
That is approximately two months' worth of operations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McVie, can you also go over the legislative constraints, particularly the Death Star bill that was considered by the legislature and how that affects municipalities and...
I will briefly go over that. There were 16 Texas administrative codes for which the state removed city's authority on eight of those 16. So, just recently had conversations about a citizen that was complaining about beekeeping, for instance, by her neighbors. Unfortunately, that is not something we can regulate anymore due to that Death Star bill. So, there are some fallouts from those type of things as far as what we can take care of as far as a home rule city. There is an attack on home rule, and by that I mean council rule.
Okay. If no other questions or comments on that, we'll move on to discussion item B, presentation regarding capital improvement projects and city council policy regarding same. Dwayne Archer, Director of Public Works.
Mayor, council, I appreciate this time to kind of go over our CIP policies that were established by council back in 2001. The policies were established to build a planning document. So, this would allow us to understand the needs, prioritize those needs, and then we can get those things completed. So, CIP projects, these are the items that CIP can be used for, that we can set aside for these projects, acquisition of land, construction, we do those big projects like that, major repairs, you might see on a CIP list where we're going to do a roof and it's a big expense to that roof, major equipment purchases, and then studies and master plans. Master plans are very important when we go through this, and I'll show you some of them that we go through in another slide. So, once we establish that list, we look at the priorities and urgency factors to rank them. And one of the big things to keep in mind, like, let's say like George Ritchie, for instance, text that may come up and say, hey, we're going to widen George Ritchie, you got to move your utilities. So, all of a sudden, that becomes a much larger priority for us, and we need to get that done fairly quickly. And so, that is dictated a lot of times by federal and state rules that come our way. I talked about guiding documents, the Longview Comprehensive Plan, the master plans of water and wastewater, parks, drainage, transportation. One not listed on here is the MODCOB master plan, where we talk about what we're doing with this complex here. It's got a lot of priorities that we try to follow to make sure that we're getting those done in the way that those priorities are listed. So, I want to kind of give you an update. So, I've got copies of the current CIP list for each of you, but there are 88 projects currently on our CIP list. We're currently at 1.1, or excuse me, $151 million. So, you can see that there's a lot of projects on there with a high cost. And so, here are some, I pulled some of the notable projects that y'all may be interested in, so like the Silver Falls widening, MLK, the Complete Street for MLK, the Fourth Street improvement. I know there's been a lot of conversation about Fourth Street over the years, the Spring Hill Extension, Paul Borman Trail, the convention complex, that's a lot of the paving over at the rodeo arena. And then this parking lot here as well is on the master plan or is on the CIP list. And really, that's the plan. I mean, these are the items that we can look at, and we use it, it is a planning document. And so, if we're looking at, hey, we need to do a certain thing, this is where we start. We always get it onto the CIP so we can start that process of getting it taken care of. And with that, any questions?
I noticed on there that a lot of master plans and studies were mentioned as guiding documents. So, if the city were to undertake an aquatic study, presumably that would then be one of the documents that...
It would certainly be used, yes, ma'am.
The other question I had, in just looking at the history of things that we've funded out of fund balance or that appear on the capital improvements list, and I didn't tell you I was going to ask this, so tell me if it's not fair, but it seems that a lot of projects we've been able to accomplish, we did by having them on that list and then finding funding in other ways, maybe through grants for trails, maybe through partnering with LEED Co. to get George Ritchie done, maybe by partnering with the county to get the animal shelter done. So, a lot of times, when we looked at spending significant dollars, because we had a master study that supported the need for that, we were able to find additional money that didn't come out of our fund reserve. Would you...
Yes, that's exactly what we do. Once we get it on that CIP list, we start looking for funding. And then, and that may be coming to you guys for funding. But we look other places first. I mean, we're looking at LEED Co., can they... I mean, we're looking at Lead Co., can they help us? Tech Dot, you know, those kind of things to try to get that funding taken care of.
I have a question. I saw that on our CIP list, which I agree with this, a lot of the projects on there primarily focus on safety, streets, signs and sewers, saw a lot of them were streets. Can you go over our road pavement study, that process, and how that deals with our capital improvement projects list?
Yes, we hire a company that actually does pavement. They drive a third of the streets every year. Sorry.
I think she's headed towards project development for the transportation plan.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. So a lot of that starts with the NPO and that planning group there, and they'll take a look at where we're seeing growth, where do we need to improve our transportation? Where do we need that larger road, that kind of thing? And then that does, that is one of the documents that's used in the planning here as well.
I need to take a closer look, but on that, CIP list, is the McCann Road on there as well?
Here, I'll get you a list right now.
Thank you.
And then make a look.
We can just pass them all, take one more.
Yeah.
It's a whole package, so you just...
John, can you help me with that? Thank you.
We're going to pass one at a time.
Gabe McTeague, so that's just yours.
It doesn't look to be on there, it doesn't look to be on there right now.
Steven.
We're reviewing, need some more? John, you take some.
And when was the last time we read that study? Can you remind me? And you said that we have a third-party company drive the streets every third of the year.
Yeah, that's when we're talking about street maintenance. But yeah, we drive a third of the streets every year, and they develop a pavement quality index, and they have a fancy van with all kinds of gadgets on it, and it gives us that number to tell us what the condition of the roadways are. And then we can use that to prioritize our chip, seal, and overlay projects for the next year.
Thank you.
And we approve, council reviews and approves this. I don't remember the timeline on when council approves this.
Yeah, it'll be coming up pretty soon. It's part of the budget process.
I'm going to just hang tight for a minute while you look at that in case there's other questions.
What was the year this was?
This is last year's. So we'll be bringing this next year's to you here shortly.
Versus the 88 projects that we've got showing on there, what have we accomplished for that? On that?
Well, if you look on there, if you see a priority one and, see right here, which is priority one, urgency one, those we moved up to that current year. So those are things we're working on this year. That's that front page, but you can see them listed in there as well.
The document is a five-year document that we present, and the first year is what council actually allocates funding for each year.
Okay, so these are going to 2028?
In theory, yes, sir.
So how many of the 2023, 2024s have we completed or accomplished at this point? Are they just the priority ones?
Yeah, we've worked on quite a few of them.
I mean, if we had 88 now, did we start out with 90?
Well, you can see there's 13 projects on that front page. Those are the ones that we're working on this year to get completed.
And they all have funding?
Yes. And that does, I'm sorry, that does have storm sewer work on High Street, but that's about it. That's a drainage improvement.
That's part of the capital plan. And one of the things that Dwayne and his group try and do is craft that five-year plan into something that's a realistic five-year accomplishment. I will tell you that that does not include all of the projects that are listed within those plans, just what they see as the ones that are most accessible or most needed in the near term.
And you'll notice on there, like, we don't have the fire training, fire police training facility information on there, because that was part of the bond project, but those next phases will be added to this next year's list.
What about the frontline medic?
The medics are bought with our vehicle replacement program.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
What's the oldest project on here that hasn't been completed?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I know that. We've had, we've had some MODCOB work that's been on there for a long time, the Ag Building. I remember years ago, we talked about that. It was a long time, that's been on there for a long period of time, yeah.
So some of these projects were, are thought up five years ago, 10 years ago?
Oh, certainly.
So those are ones that keep going down the line?
Right. If there's no opportunity for funding and the priority of it becomes, where it adjusts, then yes, we have to move it down.
So this is a, the first sheet has funding allocated to it, and everything else is just a projected list of what we would need to have on our replacement schedule for the next five years of imminent priority.
Yes.
Like, of course, more than 88, you probably have way more than 88 projects, but these are the 88 identified that within the next five years we have to take care of.
Exactly.
For our critical infrastructure.
Yeah, well, they're the priority, you know, they made the list. Now, you know, sometimes things are a priority and they end up becoming not such a priority. That happens.
Who makes, I mean, who decides the priority list?
Well, that's done from master plans, that's done from input from council, that's done from input from the departments, those kind of things.
Open public meetings.
Yeah, all kinds of, we get all kinds of information, and we use that to try to develop the best CIP list we can.
Like, if there's home flooding, that becomes a higher priority.
Right.
Like, in my district, recently, we approved that CIP project, which was that lady who bought that home under the guise, like, people had lied to her, multiple realtors, her property and multiple other people, before that kept flooding the property, so we had to purchase the property. So that's what this list is for as well.
Yeah.
Can we do that if it's too expensive to remediate?
Yeah, we can't repair it for what the house is worth, you know, it'd be cheaper to buy the house.
So some of the projects, like on the rodeo arena and stuff like that, are we involving the county in any of that, or?
Those are conversations that we've had, and so far, this funding's just not been available. I know that rodeo arena paving is climbing on the priority list for us.
So number nine here, what's wrong with MODCOB's fire sprinkler system here?
I mean, it had to be replaced. It was very old when they did the lighting project. It's already been completed, but it was done at the same time.
That's fire code stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, some of that stuff will come like that, you know, you'll have to address
I don't want to rush anybody. Do we want to spend some more time on this and look through, or does everybody feel good about questions?
We're good.
No, ma'am. I don't want to, they asked me for a time estimate on meetings, so I don't want to be disrespectful of anybody's time.
One thing I will add, just so you guys, this is a fluid list. It is guided and adopted and adjusted based on council direction. We use the policy that you've approved to populate it, but a lot of times, things change as council change, decisions on what projects to do or not do do change, and so does grant funding. We've come and we've added projects to this list because we've gotten the grant funding to go ahead and do that in the past. So just understand, this is not an absolute, this is more of a working document, is how I would view this as.
That's good. Thank you, Roland. We'll move on then to discussion item C, presentation of current status and history of Longview Aquatics. John Albertson, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you for the opportunity to discuss aquatics with you all tonight. I'll go ahead and start with an overview of where we are currently with our aquatics program, and we'll be able to go over some of the usage numbers that we have currently from the current year as well. So we, right now, have one indoor pool with Paula Martin Jones, one outdoor pool at Ingram, and five splash pads spread throughout the city. NRPA level of service recommendations are for one indoor aquatics facility and two outdoor pools. Those are just recommended levels. A lot of cities at the current moment are not meeting that, given the issues that all cities are facing when it comes to municipality aquatics. Master plan survey data that we actually collected prior to the closure of LSC said that 68% of respondents were not satisfied with the current offerings that we had. Moving on to Ingram Pool, so the history of Ingram Pool, it was constructed in 1959. It's 6,000 square feet at 259,000 gallons, and it has an operating cost of $124,000 a year. And I'll also go over some of the upcoming maintenance that we understand that we're going to have to face in coming years. The first with that would be gutter replacement and repair, as well as a liner replacement, and then recoding of the water slot. These issues are issues that we know that are coming. We don't have exact cost on yet, but we'll be working in the next coming few years to work those into our budgets. Looking at our current year Ingram Pool usage numbers, you'll see that we've projected to have 10,000 visits this year at Ingram Pool. You will also see that there's a downward trend over the year of usage. That's our average downward trend of usage, and that comes with a cost per user this season of $12.31.
John, is that actually dates on there, like, June 8th, June 10th?
Yes, that is specific dates.
You're showing dates?
That is specific dates. Actually, that is for what we've been open so far this year, Paula. Paula Martin Jones, that facility was actually built in 1958. We acquired it in 1999. The last major renovation happened in 2011, 2012, somewhere in that range. It was a complete overhaul of that facility to get it to its existing situation. It's 2,300 square feet with 110,000 gallons, with an annual operating cost of $317,000. That is for the entire facility, though. That includes the fitness side as well. Upcoming cost for that, we know that we need to replace the liner there. We have requested that in the upcoming budget for a price of $80,000. Then looking at our current year usage numbers for Paula Martin Jones, you're looking pretty steady, around 40 average visits per day with that, and that also accounts the fitness facility as well.
And do you know offhand how many members Paula Martin Jones has? Because don't you, you can get a daily pass, but it's mostly members using it.
Membership-wise, we have around 192, 200 in that range, so that fluctuates, of course.
So probably be fair to say those are mostly members as opposed to independent users?
Yes, ma'am. So with Paula Martin Jones, that is one thing. We can't necessarily track specific uses for the pool, but we track uses for the facility. And I think staff would agree at this point that the majority of uses are actually for the fitness facility and not the aquatic side. So splash pads, of course, we went over all of that information at one of the last council meetings. You will see the years on here that each one was built and their square footage, as well as their annual maintenance cost. Looking at Jack Man specifically. Looking at Jack Man specifically here, you'll see that it's 8,400 square feet with an annual maintenance cost of $13,440. That's important moving forward as we look at the usage, because that's where we were able to capture some data on how many people utilize that facility. The other splash pads, we don't have a fenced-in single entrance, so we're not able to track that data. So that's why we have Jack Man coming up.
I hope you don't mind me interrupting you as you go, I'm sorry. The annual maintenance then for Jack Man would be like actual physical maintenance? Because I think we are staffing the concession now, so we do have some staff?
Yes, we do have staffing at Jack Man. We do have some opportunities with our concessions there at Jack Man to try and look to a route that would be more cost-effective, which we're doing across the board for our department, which would be looking to go to more of a concession vending machine type setup. So we're looking at those opportunities, and that's why we did not include those numbers in there.
But like staffing, or average cost at Paula Martin Jones or Ingram would include, like, the staff that's being paid in this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And are we just, are splash pads, are they one pass only, or are they two pass? The water system?
It's one pass.
Okay, and that's more cost-effective, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And so this is our projections, or this is our numbers so far, that is, for Jack Man splash pad usage. Looking at our projections, we project that we're going to have 108,000 visits this year.
So that's again daily use?
Yes, that's daily use there. And you see that the average goes up over time, because it's generally a slower start to that season. And then next, this is our aquatics facility usage compared. So first, you'll have, the white will be Paula Martin Jones, the yellow will be Ingram Pool, and the green will be Jack Man. This is a two-week period. You will see that some days are missing, such as Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Those are dates that one of those facilities are closed during that period. We just wanted to give you a two-week period to be able to see of the dates that they're open in comparison.
So the green is the splash pad?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, John, a quick question. So Paula Martin Jones is not available for recreation use, correct?
No, sir. And then this is our facility usage again. This is what our projections are for the annual year. Paula Martin Jones is estimated to have 11,000 visits, around 11,500 visits. Ingram Pool is around 10,000. We have Longview Swim Center on here for historical context. That is the average over the last 10 years that we utilize to give that context. And then Jack Man is at 108,000 visits projected for the year. And then looking at aquatics facility cost, this is comparing our cost of operations with Paula Martin Jones at $316,000, $317,000, Ingram at $124,000, Longview Swim at $199,000, and then Jack Man at $13,000.
Can we go back and just let us look at that for a second?
Yeah.
So that's just the annual cost you're showing of each facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, keep going.
And then this slide will show you the cost per use based on those projections for this fiscal year or this current year. You're looking at $27 per visit for Paula Martin Jones, $24 for Longview Swim would have been what that would have been for historical context. Ingram is $12.31, and then Jack Man Splash Pad is 12 cents per use that we would see.
Do we factor in in any way? Because to go to Ingram, you know, I know it's not a lot, but I pay to enter. Have we factored that in in any way? Because I don't pay to go to the splash pad, but I do pay to go to Ingram. Is that calculated somehow?
So we have what our revenue is that we collect from that. I'm actually not sure off the top of my head. We can get those numbers, though, for you?
It's not factored in?
No, it is not factored into this piece. That does not come out of those numbers. Okay, next is capital maintenance considerations, just looking at where we're at, how we maintain our pools moving forward, just some things to consider about with those. Generally, a pool liner, we know, lasts anywhere from 10 to 15 years. We have the expectation that we're going to need to replace one of those. That's where we're at with Paula Martin Jones, looking at needing to replace it. Gutter lines and return lines obviously have significant issues over time, but you'll also look at substantial remodels happening every 20 to 30 years. I can say this from where I came from in Tennessee, we had the exact thing where we were having to go through a complete remodel of a pool, similar situation, and it happens generally every 20 to 30 years. It's just something that you kind of expect with a commercial pool and commercial operations. So it's something that you have to keep in mind long-term. I think for us, maintaining the pools is something that we have to be very proactive about. One thing that I'll say, Seth Powell, while he was interim acting director, brought back a full-time position for the aquatics maintenance tech that was taking part, Tom, during COVID. And so he did that whenever he was acting director, and that's something that we look forward to continuing to have that position to help us maintain our pools long-term. Seth and I were talking this afternoon about how pools are something that you really have to work with daily to have that interaction with that pool. It seems crazy, but a lot of commercial pools are like individuals, they have different ways about them. We had two pools in Tennessee. One was great, we worked with it really well. The other pool was very difficult. So there are always challenges, but having that full-time position, I think, will help us moving forward to plan all these capital maintenance things that need to be done.
Just for point of reference, how much is that position annually?
It was $38,000 is what that position is. Moving on to some lifeguard... Moving on to some lifeguard challenges. This is one of the most significant issues, I think, that faces municipality aquatics. The American Lifeguard Association estimated that over one-third of the 309,000 public pools in America were affected by the lifeguard shortage in 2023 and will either have to close or reduce their hours in 2024. Several cities have gone to the degree that they're having to offer up to $3,000 sign-on bonuses for lifeguards to be able to get enough lifeguards. Some cities in Texas are already paying 18 to 20 dollars an hour to be able to get lifeguards. The city of Phoenix, for example, has 39 public pools. They were only open, they only opened 24 this year because of lifeguard shortages. So there are a lot of, there are a lot of reasons for that. One is lifeguarding is seasonal. A lot of younger people these days would like to be able to have a more year-round part-time job that they can do after school and throughout the summer as well than pay. As mentioned, working in the elements actually has been a significant challenge that we've had. A lot of younger people do not want to work in those elements anymore. COVID was a significant issue as football teams have feeder programs, such as the youth lowball league that leads into your middle school to your high school. You build that with your lifeguards. And COVID was a significant issue where we lost a lot of those core groups. And so now cities are having to rebuild those groups to be able to try and plan for that future. Also, the certifications are a challenge. A lot of teenagers and people that we would look at to be lifeguards don't want to go get that certification when they can just work somewhere else that doesn't require that certification or that level of responsibility as well. But with that, I will answer any of your questions.
What would it take to get Paula Martin Jones to be like recreational use?
The issue with Paula Martin Jones is the deck space for that. I think it would be a substantial capital project to be able to do it, because the deck space is not near wide enough for that amount of traffic around the pool. So we would have to expand the building and do several things like that.
Thank you.
I have a question. So I spoke with Mr. McPhee about this before, and you mentioned, and I'm kind of putting you in spy, I could have whispered it to you. But so for us to maintain in that federal guideline of being a city to where we have the ability to offer our citizens the opportunity to learn to swim, correct? When we discussed that, yeah?
That was the learn to swim, and I've sent an email with council, and I said, you know, whether council should decide to build a pool, not build a pool, close a pool, not pull, not close a pool. In the Longview Swim Center, which Ray can answer this better than I, because he was here when it happened, but there were grant funds that the city basically received grant funds from EdCog as well as from the federal government because of the pandemic, the pandemic of drowning-related deaths. And so as the federal government often does, they will incentivize municipalities to take up that mission and to be the solution by putting grant money out there that they would hope would be a sustainable thing. That's how the Longview Swim Center was created. So it, you know, if that's what it was, was truly the learn to swim. So do you need a pool to teach learn to swim? It makes it easier? Is it impossible? I'm not sure. But in my opinion, and because you've invited me this, I think that is the thing that regardless of what we, what council decides, that is the piece that we have to figure out as a community, how to make sure people within our community have that learn to swim capability, regardless of where it's offered, how it's offered, or what. But I truly think that was the initial purpose of that from the very beginning. Hopefully I did you justice.
Yes, that's exactly it. Thank you.
No other questions or comments for Mr. Albertson?
Yes, I would like to make a, so, you know, we, we talk about, and I appreciate your presentation. You know, in this, if it's aquatic studies, looking for a solution. We know, you mentioned the system where you have athletics and feeder system for schools. And unfortunately, we're in this position where we don't have a pool now that offers swim lessons that could solve a little bit of the problem of future lifeguards. So, you know, with any, you know, Mr. McPhee mentioned the constraints on budget. There's also constraints on pay for employees and all, not just public, but also private enterprise. And so, but I guess, John, what's your, you know, we mentioned a lot of the challenges. So I guess when we look at a discussion here, we really want to look at solutions. And so what could be, if the lifeguard shortage is an issue, what ideas? How can we be creative to solve those problems? So do you have, you know, you mentioned how difficult it is and how, how that's, that's, that's not just here, but in other parts of the country. What ideas, and it may be you too, Mr. McPhee, like what can we do? Because we, we've mentioned that we need swim safety. So we know we don't just need that part we've talked about for the recreation aspect for our families and our community. But, you know, we know that that's going to be any type of aquatic study. If we place a pool somewhere, then we got to have people to do it. What are we going to do to get, what are we doing to recruit the best for our kids?
So one of the things that this has been a topic of discussion between John and Mary Ann and me, we have talked about this. I challenged John, just to be quite honest with you, I said, see who we can contract with. See who, what willing community partners do we have with pools right now to where we can offer swim lessons? I can tell you that we've not made a lot of progress on that, obviously, because we're halfway through the swim season. We're not there yet. We had hopes that maybe, maybe, maybe the eventual bond project from the school, I know that's been hit and miss, but maybe that's part of the solution. I don't know what the solution is, but we have a number of privately run pools throughout the community that I would think we just need to figure out, hey, we'll run the class. You charge the fees for it. We'll use your pools. I think that is, as far as I'm concerned, would be something that we would try and work forward as the stopgap measure to make sure the life safety concerns are met until we figure out at such time that we do that. Even if we choose to build a pool or not build a pool, I think in, in the interim, that's the work that we've got to do to figure out what that solution looks like. Hopefully I answered your question.
That does answer, but I guess the next step to that is what, what ideas do we have to recruit personnel to be lifeguards? I mean, we know it's, you know, it's an issue, you know. So how do we address that issue?
He's taken steps with his aquatics coordinator.
We are definitely working on that currently. I think the first step we've already done, which is being able to hire our aquatic supervisor to fill that position for the first time in a couple of years here. We spent some time where we didn't have a person to be able to meet all of those certifications, to not only teach people to swim, but teach people to teach people to swim. So we're working on getting all of those certifications. That staff member has come in and hit the ground running. We're working to try and build that. You know, Seth and I, being the recreation manager, we discussed today. We've talked at length for several months throughout this process about how we actively work to recruit lifeguards. It's a process of building that network, but engaging with the school districts in order to be able to find the youth that want to be able to do that. So I think there's several things that we already are working on and in the process of trying to get that built back up so that we have that in place. It's a very competitive market for people that have those certifications, and I think that's one of the reasons that we've had some time here without one.
Not necessarily a question, but just a comment. I know as we're talking about a lot of these things, especially children and everybody in our community, I just, and I know we've talked about this, John, but just having a multi-generational approach to our aquatics or parks, I think, is important. I think we have a lot of people moving here that are, or people that are current, that have been here their whole lives that are having family, raising children, but we have a lot of people that are aging as well. And I think those folks also deserve what, when we're talking regards of parks or aquatics, a place that they can go to as well.
Okay. I will move us on then to discussion item D, recommendation for aquatics study. John Albertson again.
Thank you again. I would like to recommend that we do an aquatics master plan study in order to review all of the multifaceted pieces to this issue. I think that's our best method forward, and I will explain in detail as to why. So first, an aquatics master plan study would consider the current facilities that we have as well as current trends in the aquatics market. While we work in the operations side of aquatics, we don't work in the aquatics planning. There's all types of new technology. Whereas our facility that we currently have at Ingram has one small water slide and then a small beach entry. Current trends are lazy rivers, splash parks, multiple large water slides. And what those aquatics master planners can do is look at a facility that we're able to operate using a minimal amount of staff. So that's one reason that doing an aquatics master plan can help look at our future as a city. So the aquatics master plans help cities prevent long-term mistakes. We've heard of numerous cities in Parks and Rec that have not gone with a master plan and have regretted it for many years to come, just because of limited usage, cost of operations, et cetera. And then this would allow the citizens to be heard on what direction they would like to see the aquatics program for the city of Longview go. It would also consider all of the options that many people have presented in our community. We've heard, I think, since this has come about, tons of options, tons of things to consider. This would allow us to truly flesh all of those ideas out through one process. It would give us actionable items for the city council to consider. And then it would help us coordinate not just the city's aspect of aquatics, but also private entities, providers, school districts, et cetera, in our community. And then it would also give us the opportunity to engage the youth of our community. We could look at different age groups, figure out what all we want to try and address, and move forward with our plan. And then lastly, just looking at the timeframe of what an aquatics master plan would look like, you're looking at eight to 12 months with an estimated cost of anywhere from $55,000 to $100,000. And this process would look like data collection, which would be an audit of our existing facilities, where they currently sit, with their status, as well as other aquatics providers in our community. And then public meetings would be the next step, which would be setting goals and objectives that are attainable by our city. That would be meetings with public at large, citizens, as well as community leaders and everyone here. And then the final, or the final plan would be presented, and options would be created by the consultant utilizing all of their experience as well as considering modern-day trends and the issues that we face with modern-day aquatics. So with that, I will answer any of your questions about that.
I just have a couple of comments. I agree with everything you say, and in particular, I think that planning documents are really important. However, I don't think they replace the empirical voting, putting it out to the voters. I think this is almost just like our comprehensive plan, which I think is needing, because prior planning prevents poor performance. But I think it's also important for us to keep in mind that all those, although this may identify some wishes of ours, I think that ultimately, for me personally, kind of like the commissioner said, I would like to see the people vote ultimately, regardless of money that's being spent, to see if this is something that they want. Do I believe the community wants a pool? I think so, and we need to figure out an aquatics process. But I think that we're also living in an economy of needs versus wants, and I think that we need to figure out an aquatic solution. I don't think anyone's negating that. We need to figure that out. But I also think that when it comes down to spending millions and millions of dollars, I don't ever think it should come from our savings, except for the uses that were brought earlier or one-time costs that could, you know, align with safety, straight science, and sewers. And that's just kind of my point on this.
Yeah, he said he's open to discussion or questions. Yeah, I would, I guess, just for history, I really would view an aquatic study similar to how the comprehensive plan operated. And I think Longview did that very successfully in engaging a third-party consultant, appointing a task force of people that had interest in it. And I have full faith in our very smart and resourceful community that we have the ability to find the right task force members to do that, the ability to engage the public, and the ability to not make a very expensive mistake. But the comprehensive plan came back with actionable items that we moved on, and the task force brought back recommendations in the form of putting out a bond to voters that was overwhelmingly publicly supported. I personally feel like this is a perfect opportunity to repeat that process and do so successfully, making sure that we're very cognizant of how we appoint taxpayer money. But I think this is a great opportunity and an example of using something similar to the comprehensive plan as well. But I guess I don't have a question, so sorry. Anybody have any questions about the aquatics study recommendation from Mr. Albertson?
So, John, this would be similar to what we just did with the Parks Master Plan?
Correct. This would focus specifically on aquatics. The master plan reviewed all of our facilities at a higher level and did not drill down into a specific type of facility.
But this was identified as something that the, in that Parks Master Plan, that aquatics was something that was needed to further look into?
Yes, it was mentioned a couple of times through questions, through the questionnaire that was given out for the master plan.
And how long did that Parks Master Plan take?
Altogether, I came in halfway through that process, so I'd say it was nine months, somewhere around in there.
The comprehensive plan also identified it as a priority.
What experience in your previous employment do you have regarding aquatics?
Oh, aquatics are a challenge for every community. Just the stats that I gave about Phoenix only having 24 out of 39 pools open. It's a, it's an issue that all departments are facing to some degree. Some have faced it and made it through those issues and moved on. But several are right at the point where we're at. Actually, I spent a couple of days back in Tennessee for a wedding recently, and I talked to our previous department, and they're having issues at the moment that they're going to have to deal with, just exactly like what we're in. So it's all a challenge everywhere.
So your other previous employment aquatics program, what did that consist of? How many pools? What was the?
We had two pools there. They were both the same age, maybe a little newer than what the pools were here. They were, they had about a similar level of attributes, I guess, to that facility. Low usership, which is driving a lot of discussion at the moment, and high cost. So they're having to deal with it on their county level. They don't have the finances to be able to continue to operate it at the degree that they need to. So they're having the challenge of potentially having to have a closure, because they just can't operate it, so.
When it comes to swim safety, and I know we've all talked about the challenges and stuff and that come with it, I know that, as we've been talking, you said you've been doing a lot of research on this. And what steps, how, action steps have you seen other municipalities take in lieu of not having accurate pools or things of that nature to meet the need of teaching people swim safety in order to prevent drownings?
The city of Lubbock, actually just yesterday, opened their three new splash pads, I believe. They replaced their pools with splash pads, given the challenges that they had with aquatics. They have several private providers there in their community as well. But that was a decision that they had to make for the long-term cost there at Lubbock. Several other cities are going through an aquatics master plan at the moment. The city of Fort Worth, several years ago, did an aquatics master plan. And they had no recommendation of building more pools. They actually closed their pools. They took a pause because there was not enough community involvement or desire for that. But now they are in the process of doing another aquatics master plan to review that. So it, it just varies by city. But several are in the process of having to address long-term maintenance of pools.
So their master plan people would also be identifying those creative approaches to teach the educational aspect of swim safety so that that component's not missing? Because ultimately, as legislators, that's our biggest hurdle. Our, our biggest thing that we have to meet is like, how do we address those key issues in our society? And how do we prevent major life-threatening injuries on our public spaces?
Yes, ma'am. An aquatics master plan would be able to address all of those factors. It would be able to evaluate individual providers that we have in our community that are still currently operating to do learn to swim, as well as flesh out opportunities that we would potentially have to partner to offer those as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Albertson, in one of our previous council meetings, you made a presentation stating that a city the size of Longview has the capacity for two outdoor pools. Can you discuss that once again? How you presented that before?
Yes. So that's a NRPA level of service standards on our first slide there. It recommends one indoor aquatic facility as well as two outdoor. That is simply a recommendation that's put out by the NRPA. I can tell you that currently, the vast majority of municipalities aren't meeting that recommendation. That changes by city size as well, but most are not meeting that. Several have completely ignored that piece of the recommendations from NRPA.
So to me, I think the things that I'm focusing on is that point that you made, you know? Regardless if other municipalities are meeting it or not, we have the capacity for it and we should probably consider it. And then the other thing is our responsibility to our citizens with having the facilities to be able to offer them an opportunity to swim. This learn to swim thing is very important to me. As a child, I learned to swim over at Broad and Park. And that opportunity was there in the summers. And I think, you know, one of our great responsibilities to our citizens and to our youth would be to have that option for them. So it's just kind of a general statement, nothing really to be responded to. Thank you, guys.
I know Mr. Conley had a question or a comment.
Yeah, it's really just a statement, I guess, and like some clarification from Mr. Albertson. So we have, can you please go back to that slide? So according to this, the last bullet, 68% respondents were not satisfied with the current swimming options in that master plan study. I know we, we've talked about being, I have to be like one of them. Ms. Gamboa mentioned financially being, I think Mayor Isher, Isher talked about taxpayer money being, taking our time, making the right decisions, of course. But we are, we just, at the last city council meeting, we spent $135,000 to demolish a pool. And then this is going to take eight to 12 months, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's going to cost us between $55,000 and $100,000 to, just to get the study?
Yes, sir.
And we've already established that we have 68% of the people that aren't pleased with what we currently have. And I've heard, and I agree that we like public input, but if we ask for a bond, we're asking for extra taxpayer money. And I think we've all established that with this meeting, this work session, it seems like the idea was to come up with some, some ideas, that solutions to our problem. And spending another $100,000 and then waiting 12 months to decide what we're going to do, after we've already spent $135,000 closing one option. I'm just, I'm, I'm new to this as a councilman, but I'm here for the people and trying to figure out what we're doing with our money. And either option, it seems, and I just want to say, I know we need money in savings. But we've all admitted, and through all the meetings I've heard, that we've neglected the pools that we currently have. We didn't maintain them to our responsibility. And that was a lot of that money that's available in balance, in fund balance, could have been used to maintain some of the pools and kept, keep them functional even this summer. I guess I'm just making a statement. I'm just looking at all the facts here. And I just want to try to do the best and make this session productive. And where are we going moving forward? And I'm, I'm going to give you a chance, I guess, to respond, John. But the master, aquatics master plan, it seems great in theory, but we're looking at spending $100,000 and waiting another year to make a decision on what we're going to do? Is that, is that what I'm, is that the suggestion?
For a point of information, the one-time $100,000 that we spent was a one-time expenditure that we all approved from our fund balance, which is our savings. Morally, just because it's available doesn't mean you should use it. And to your point, that is still taxpayer dollars from their savings. And so I think that if taxpayers want to use money either from their savings or make the conscious decision to spend one to two pennies to get something, that is their decision. I don't think anyone is negating the fact that we need pools. In fact, I think the danger with, I want a pool at Stamper, well, I want a pool at Spring Hill. I do. I think everybody does. I think everybody could agree that we all want a pool in our district. The difference with that is, is that it's not just a one-time cost from our savings. It would be the building fee, which is, which would be a one-time cost projected at 3.5 million. But let me tell you, I'm in construction. The cost of concrete's going up, excavation costs are going up, machinery costs are going up. It's not going to be 3.5 million. That's your 1.5, that's your one-time cost. After that, you have to think of the annual maintenance cost, which would not be a one-time expense coming from our savings account. So I think that, could we all agree that we want a pool? Heck, yeah, we all want aquatics, we all want a pool, we all want somewhere for children and older people and anyone to learn to swim and play and do all those great things. No one is negating that fact. The point of the matter is, is we are living in a tough economy. Unfortunately, we are, and we have to make tough choices. And if we're going to get a pool, then we have to plan prior to that, see where the best place to put a pool. Because what if the aquatic study says that the pool is going to be in Spring Hill? Let me tell you, I'm a bad hardcore for Spring Hill, just like y'all are batting hardcore for Stamper or Pine Tree or wherever else. You know, I want to see a pool in Mod Cob. I'd like us to see us focus more on this place that we own and fix the parking lot and fix, re-roof the rodeo arena. And I'd like to see us market ourselves as a bigger convention center to bring in more tax dollars through horse shows and gun shows and things of that nature. But that's not this discussion. The discussion is, is the first premise is, do we need to do something about aquatics? Yes, overwhelmingly, 68%. Everyone has stated that, and we all want to do what's best for our citizens. But the second question that we cannot miss as a council, and trust me, I was there with you the first budget season. It's hard making these choices, but from our savings account, I don't think so. Every citizen that's called me thinks that we've made the right choice and halting and making, making conscious choices of how we spend their savings. Because in a time where people are literally posting their grocery receipts because their groceries are going four ti, growing two to four times in cost, I think we just need to be conscious of that. Not everybody has a white collar job. There's a lot of people with blue collar jobs who live in a rural area. I know that most people, we're talking about millions here, but as a small business owner, I count pennies. And I think a lot of people in our city count pennies as well.
We've definitely jumped into a discussion item E, so I'm going to go ahead and open that. Oh, do you need to, I'm sorry, you're right, you did ask a question. I'm sorry, please answer.
So with the aquatics master plan, the thought is, is that we'll be able to take all of that public input and then be able to come up with the best idea and concept for the city. It's taking that and putting it together.
Mr. Conley, if I can just say, I'm not saying this is the perfect solution. I think that's what he's recommended to us. But I think the, the main thing, in my opinion, that the aquatic study does, and these are the words he, when he visited with me about it, that I'll share with you. He said, "It just prevents us from making the wrong, or prevents council from making a wrong decision." May not change the decision. But I do think that, that long-term, that's, that's the reason he's leaning on the aquatics study. Some of the things that he's mentioned before, and we've talked about this, is the National Parks and Rec is a little bit, those standards are, I guess you could say, slower to move, John? Is that accurate? And so, so one of the things that as the trends, everybody's suffering from these same things that we are suffering from, Highland Park, read an article. They had some donor come forward and put up a bunch of money and the council still decided not to redo the pool. And so I think that's, that's long-term is just to make sure we hit that logistical, to make sure we don't make the mistakes. That, that is it. It does not solve the problems that each of you have in the, in the respective areas or the access in the immediate future.
Well, I just want to, clarification on my comment. We have, we're talking about taxpayer money, not every penny counts. We, we spent $135,000 for demolition on one. And I was just asking about the $100,000 to decide what we're going to do on the next step. Because I do value all taxpayer money myself, included.
So.
Can I move to the discussion item, or are you asking John a question?
This, I mean, it's tying into what John's thing is, but it's, the 130, the 130,000, whatever the cost was on that, it's, it's in lieu of spending 2.4. And so you've got to look at it in that frame of mind. Also, on the aquatic study for the, you know, $100,000, when you're talking about spending millions and millions of dollars, that's going to save us by identifying the different needs and the requirements. It's going to save us vast more amount of money than that. So it's, it's just prudent planning, it's a part of cost of doing that. Also, it's, we all have our biases and our agendas and different things. And it makes it what we're above approach because you're bringing in a third-party independent observer to, to take in all the concerns, what we currently have, where we currently are, what, what do we want to accomplish? What are our goals, all that kind of stuff? So I think it just, that, it allows where it's not just the council up here making the decision and we're deciding what we're going to do based on just the amount of votes we can get, but it's actually taking a holistic approach to the aquatics program.
I'm, I'm very aware of what a consultant can do and how the money works, okay? My point is, I just want to make sure we're aware of the fact that we are spending taxpayer money for that purpose, okay? So, yeah, I know how consultants work. And I think I've, in, in, in public schools, you know, we, we, at times, there's times where we need help. So, but there's also times where we have to tighten up and figure out what's going to happen. And I think also, one of the things that I'm learning from this process with the swim is we are behind the, we, we are, we all can admit that we, the, particularly Longview Swim Center that we just demolished, we are, did not do a good job of maintaining it. So we're behind on that. And now I'm, I'm just looking at the timeline and how, how long does this take to get something new? I understand why you do it, okay? But I just want to make a point that, you know, we're, we're looking at two sides of it. I see the use of it, but it is an extra expense. And I just want to make that note. And then, and I also want to look at the timeline as a concern. Because we're already, it's middle of July and we've lost a year. We have Ingram, but that's it. And we don't have, you know, I just want, you know, with this, in the, in the, in the spirit of making this a work session, I understand what consultants are, okay? But I understand also that there's a price with that and making sure we're making the right decision when we, when we decide what we're going to do. And, and looking at that does cost.
Okay, I'm going to do discussion item now. E, discussion item regarding City of Longview Aquatics, city council. Floor is open for discussion, comments, solutions?
I have a comment. So I want to make sure that we're clear that when we're talking about the usage of the pools and the history of the pools, that we factor in the usage, that we factor in COVID, what COVID did to every city in Longview, I mean, every city in the world, what it did, what COVID affected in the usage of pools. Nobody could swim. The fact that we did not maintain a pool for how many years that a lot of you sit on council? So I need, I need everybody to factor that in, that we closed down a pool without a plan to replace anything, and we're not factoring the biggest factors of the reason why the usage was down is because it was poorly maintained in COVID. We leave those two factors out. And nobody is talking about that.
And actually, a lot of us, we're not on the council all the time, but we're still, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do our best with decisions that other leaders have made, which is where we're all at right now. And this is a discussion which I, we all have our views and our points of view on things that we're going to do. I think the best approach is, it's not that we did not do anything. The first step was to have to make the tough choice to close that down. This is the second step. This work session is the second step to come up with a solution, which would be the aquatic study, which, which would then identify and come up with a practical, data-driven solution of where this pool would go that we're all talking about is needed. I think you guys keep going back to, you guys don't want a pool and we shut down. That is not what's happening. We, we all want a pool, we all want aquatics. We all want young children to have somewhere to go play with their buddies and grow up like how I did here since seven years old, learning to swim places that we have. But the reality that we're facing is that money is not infinite, it's finite. And we're having to make sensible decisions that maybe we don't necessarily want to make, but we have to make because money is finite. And if we are going to build a pool, we have to come up with creative solutions to get that done. Because I agree with you, kids do need to learn how to swim. And we do need a pool, and we do need a pool in West Longview and we, or in aquatics places in west and south and north. I think every, every one of our citizens, no matter what district, deserves the right to live, work, play and worship freely in their city, which our job is to just make that easier for them.
So I just want to remind everybody also that when we were talking in council, before I was on council and I was sitting in the seat as a citizen, I remember it being said, "Well, let's see what Longview does. Let's see if that bond passed." The bond passed. And y'all know, a lot of us know from previous discussions, that they have no intentions on bringing that to South Longview. We, we know that. That was said in meetings that y'all have had with them, that they don't want it. They want it out there by the high school. Is that not correct?
We actually didn't know that.
Is that not correct, that y'all have heard that?
I read in the paper that they're going to just talk about it at their July meeting, but that is my understanding from having conversations that the plan was at the high school.
And then also, let's think about this, because the big deal, one of the biggest issues that the Longview Swim Center was closed down because it was, oh, it's not city-owned property, that we can't control it.
It was actually access.
Was that not an issue? Was, was that not an issue, was it not an issue as well?
Yeah, certainly investing in property we don't own was something that came up, absolutely.
And so we now have property that we do own with parking lots, with restrooms, that we can't control. Is that not correct, John? Do we have, do we have a facility, a place that has a parking lot, that has restrooms already made, that is owned by the city of Longview?
Yes, ma'am.
We're sitting in one of them.
But, but what I'm saying is, I'm talking about that it's ready, that a pool can be built. We're not talking about just anywhere. I'm talking about right now, what y'all said in previous meetings, that it needs to be somewhere, and y'all talked about it, and y'all said that the land should be owned by the city. There is land owned by the city that has, that meets the requirements where there won't, where there now have to be a parking lot built and a restroom facility. That was one of the requirements that y'all wanted when we did the vote.
But that wasn't necessarily a requirement. Those are things that we were discussing. And now that you've spoken, it's also my turn. And in regards to access, just for a point of information, it wasn't that, necessarily that it was owned by someone else. It was that we did not have access. And like Commissioner Bostick stated, when that pool was built, Pine Tree was an open campus. And if we want to talk about other issues that are going on in our city, we have some crazy people out there who are targeting our most vulnerable. And I, I'm not, I'm not for opening a campus and putting kids at risk. That was the actual issue, was access. And the second issue was that it wasn't owned by the city. It wasn't primarily that it was not owned by the city. I think that, and that wasn't a finite answer. I think we're even open to discussing things if it makes the most financial sense for us. But the actual reason, because I know it has not been put out there correctly, is for access. We did not have proper access to and from that place. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So from the first meeting that John presented the pools, you know, with Ingram's constituency, with Paula Martin Jones, with the Longview Swim Center, you know, at that time, I said we need to look at a holistic approach to aquatics. There's too many different pieces on where things are going. In regards to the COVID numbers, the numbers were provided to us that go back to 2013, the usage has not been that different from then, from post-COVID. So the, and the Longview Swim Center, the decline also would be, there was no lap pool there too, possibly on that one. But the COVID numbers are pretty much where they were in a sense of, that, that's kind of been betted out. So we have the post, the pre-COVID numbers, and that's the better average to me, I think, would be using those numbers, that are more historical. But, you know, really with what Ray said and Jim Saredo said, here's, here's where I'm at. Like, what's our goal, and then how do we know if we accomplish that goal? And that's what we need to identify, because we're, we're here and we're, we're talking about it, and we're doing a discussion, we're doing different things, but, you know, what's our target age? What's our, is our goal safety? Is it community entertainment? What amenities are we going to have? How many pools are we going to have? Where do we locate those pools? Indoor or outdoor pools? Staffing cost, operating cost, maintenance cost? What, how many visitors do we want to have? What's the cost per visitor? You know, is there a certain, are we just interested in a certain location? Are we open to see about partnerships? What can we do with LECO? What can we do with Greg County? What can we do with private partnerships? What is, what is LISD going to do? They don't know what their location is going to be yet, they haven't determined that. So what's LISD going to do? What's Branches of Hope going to do? There's a lot of different things that, we've got to look at everything and kind of see, all right, where are we at? And I've already said this, we all had different agendas, everybody wants a pool in their, their district, and it no longer becomes a, it becomes a location issue, and it becomes a location argument, and not a what is best for the community. And that's the discussion that we need to be having. We're not going to have a solution tonight, because, you know, there's a lot that has to come through this. And I think the aquatic study that John has presented and recommended is what's going to be that comprehensive approach to do that, in which how the council has acted in past regarding comprehensive plans, parks master plans, it opens our ability up for grants, it does a lot of different things that we can do, and we don't have to, to try to, to do something, as, you know, Jim said too, don't vote for a solution in search of a problem. Let's, let's think about this, let's do the data, let's figure out what we want to do, and then let's come to this as a, as a unified council and say, okay, here's where we are, here's what we can do, let's get our community input, let's hear from the taxpayers before we go spending their money, because if it's, if it stops at one pool, that may be fine, but then it goes to another pool, and then it goes to this, and it, and at that point now, here we are, we're fast-forwarding, and we spent 10, 15 million dollars on, on something that started off as this, and we really need to look at it comprehensively, we need to look at the full thing, and I, that's, you know, I don't have anything additional added to that, but that's where I'm at, and that was the same way that I was at whenever John first presented the issue with the pools to us at the council meeting at that point with it.
So I guess, as a council, John, your recommendation, eight to 12 months from, like, so if we, if we were to vote on something, we're going to not make a decision to do anything with any kind of aquatics for another year?
I think if, so, from this point forward, we can ask him to do a request for bid, which would be telling, going out in search, asking for timeframe, so in theory, we could ask for six months, I don't know if that's reasonable, but we can designate what we want the bid to come back as, the questions we want answered, the timeframe we want answered, all those things. That would be something council would approve, would engage in the study, and then I, what I envision, or what I hope that we will get to, is a task force that takes that aquatic study through, that comes back with a recommendation to council that we can review and consider, and then decide how we're going to fund. That would be my personal hope. Yes.
So you're saying, because we're, John brought up, you know, and what do we, what's the goal, right? What's the goal here? So you're, what we're establishing the goal is going to be, that we're not, we're still not going to make a decision for another six, six months at the earliest?
My goal would be getting to the correct answer by putting in the necessary time to research it and to come back with a comprehensive answer that can serve all of Longview. That would be my goal. Will it take 12 months? Yes, probably true, yes. Yes, I don't have a good answer for that, I don't know how to shorten it, I just, yeah. We're new, I can't, I wish I could answer that better, but I, I don't think there is a better answer to it.
Well, I just, and I think Ms. Campbell brought it up, I think we've all brought it up, I mean, we want, Mr. Mcfee, we want, and Mr. Wade, we want swim instruction, we want a place for our recreational use, families, especially an affordable place during the summer. We saw 68% of our people are not happy with what we currently have. And in this work session, and I, I guess this is a discussion moving forward, but we know there's a need for family engagement, community engagement, creating amenities. We brought up, she, Michelle, Michelle, Ms. Campbell brought up, you know, the amenities of even a nice Mod Cob Convention Center, obviously those things attract people to our city, businesses that we want. So, you know, I just, I just want to make it a note that I, I feel at this point, because of the delay in action, that an action's going to be needed, and I don't know, again, we're doing what our people that elected us to these positions want, and six months to 12 months to decide what we're going to do, that's, I just want to see, is that what we're, is that, is that the solution? I mean, is that what, is that the best solution?
I strongly believe it is the best solution. Everybody up here gets a vote, but I strongly believe it is the best solution.
Mr. Conley, I understand what you're saying on the timeframe. I think from this starting place, even if we start it now and we said, hey, we're going to agree to build a pool tomorrow, we're still two years out, even for that happening. And so I'm not suggesting any direction at all, I'm just trying to give a reference of timeframe from where we're starting, how do we end it up here, where we're starting from, just no matter what direction we go, we're still under the same kind of time window.
And I understand, and I, I love somebody said the word unified here, because we have a problem that we need to solve. And we know there's a need to do that, so I feel like we have a responsibility to do all we can as efficiently, fiscally also, financially responsible as we can be, but also to do it in a way that understands that, like you just mentioned, Mr. Wade, I mean, if we're, if we know we got a pool and it's going to be two years down the road, and we're taking another year, we're talking three years, we already have a year where we don't have anything for our community. You know, I just, I, I don't really have, again, I'm, I'm all for what you mentioned, Mr. Newstead, a unified council, because this, we have got to figure out how to solve this problem. And do it as efficiently and financially responsible, and that, in a way that we, we are advocating for all parts of Longview.
I just want to give kudos and thankful for our mayor as well, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this the first work session in like six years?
I have, yes.
Yes, so I think that we're doing good so far in taking those first steps to be unified and having these discussions, because before, we haven't really had this opportunity to have multiple settings like this, where we are able to get to know each other's hearts better, right? Because part of doing this is we can't really necessarily talk to each other, we have to wait till these public forums to be able to discuss these things. So I'm thankful, and I think that's important, that we keep in mind as well, as we're having these discussions, is this is like our one and only chance to get to talk to each other and figure out what we're going to do. Not our one and only chance, because we can have more work sessions, but I mean, these are the settings in which we can have those discussions, you know?
Another thing I just want to add, that I'd be remiss if I didn't add. A part of this council, just from what I'm hearing, feels as if we've done the study, that we're ready to swing the bat, that we're ready to go, and, you know, I don't know if it's because Mr. Albertson's done a great job, or if everyone's done their homework, but I think, you know, just kind of looking at both sides of this, you know, there's part of this council that feels, yes, you know, we haven't done enough homework, and then there's another part of this council feels that we have done all the homework, and let's, let's make a decision, and let's go. And so I think that's where we find ourselves at. I think this work session is part of us hashing out those differences, and everyone gets the ability. Me personally, I'm all for what we can do to have us some type of aquatics in Longview. Obviously, like everyone else, I care about my district and I care about South Longview, I think we're equipped for it, and I think it'd be a great place, but I do see where this division is happening with this council, and I, I think it's an easy resolution for it, honestly, but that's where that division is, and I don't know if anyone can respond to it, to answer it. I don't think it even requires an answer, but it's a statement of where we are.
Yeah. I think that's succinct, Mr. Wade, and it is, you know, historically kind of a divide that we find ourselves in, you know, consultant that you pay for versus making a decision and saving the time, and so I certainly understand the frustration of adding time and adding expense. I will, I had a couple of comments I wanted to make. I do want to thank everybody for the time, I know time is precious, and we're taking a lot of it this week, so I appreciate the time. And I am open to comment suggestions on how to do work sessions better, if you never want to do one again, if you'd like to do them every Tuesday, I'm open to all suggestions that you have. I'm open to any suggestions you have.
You didn't ask for me to say anything, did you?
No, sorry. Every leap year? I did, no. But I did want to make a couple of comments, because it is, I think, a good opportunity for us to share with each other kind of what we're thinking and where we're at. And we do, from the city's perspective, have a large list of what I would consider needs on the capital improvement project that we talked about tonight. We have, I know from Mr. Mcfee going into budget season, we have general constraints that we're going to be looking at ongoing. I'm just truly sad that we're not getting to do cost of living adjustments this year, and looking at taking down some road maintenance. Those are things that I know we will hear from constituents on that will be unhappy. So just considering the general state, I do want to publicly say that I am very committed to aquatics, and I am very committed to quality of life issues, those have always been very important to me. So I do want to move forward with the study, get the right answers, and do the right thing for all of Longview. But I do think we need to do it with the time, with the cost of the consultant, and I think, I mean, I think you're exactly right, Mr. Wade, that's kind of the line we find ourselves on, but I find myself solidly on the side of, this is something I've seen work for us with the comprehensive plan very successfully, in my opinion, and I'd like us to consider repeating that process. And I do think it is a great opportunity to bring that third-party consultant in, we each get to give our own opinion, where if I'm being honest, I'm not sure that we could at this work session say, there's $5 million on the table, let's figure out where we're going to put a pool, and everybody be happy with it. I just don't know that that's something we could as a group do, because we all have a unique responsibility to the people in our district to represent them. And I, you know, it is a privilege to be in this seat and an honor to get that feedback and what residents want, but it is a burden then to bring that into the comprehensive plan that has to be Longview as a whole. We have to be able to look at, work with each other, and decide what are the financial priorities for the city. So yes, we want a pool, yes, we probably would like multiple pools, but can we afford multiple pools? Can we afford the capital? Can we afford the maintenance? There's just a lot of things that I know I don't personally feel like I have, I know the answers to, so would not be comfortable moving forward with making a decision on aquatics today, but I am certainly comfortable pushing to move forward with an aquatic study. So I would urge other council members to consider supporting the recommendation of Mr. Albertson, and I will be setting that on the agenda at a future meeting, if we want to discuss that further, we certainly can, I'd love input on it, but that would be my plan moving forward, to set on a future agenda that approval of council to fund the aquatic study, and then I personally would plan to appoint a task force of individuals invested in aquatics in our community, so that we can rely on them receiving public input and move that forward, hopefully as a united council.
Similar to like the CPAC, how each council member appoints one to two?
I think I might do it aquatics-wise, but we can talk about that. Yeah, certainly our partners that we've mentioned, and I like Longview ISD and Pine Tree, people that are invested in the swim community with us, so. That is all I plan to say. Does anybody have any other discussion, comments? Okay. I will then adjourn our meeting. Thank you guys very much for the time.